Good evening and welcome to my school meeting. It's Monday, April 25th, 2022. It's six o'clock. This is until you like the order of the 18:87. If you'd like to call me and tell or ask.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mrs. Ignorcell?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. Anam?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Stoll?
Here.
Ms. Warpin?
Yeah.
We do have a quorum. We will continue. I will note that tonight's meeting has been noted as first day statute. Do we have any community participation that's not on the agenda?
I have not received any.
Hearing none. We'll dispense with reading that and go to the West Side student presentation.
Hi there. I'm Vince Silberle. I'm a principal at West Side. Diane made a garden, our occupational therapist, and Mia Oldman, special education.
God, when they update their process. I've never seen just open.
You have to click them back.
I was just gonna say, tell us, you have the kids, I'm sorry which one.
So we'll be presenting about RISE, which is reaching independence through structured engagement. And when we first developed RISE, it was in response to meeting needs of certain students that fell in between that that gray area we had where they weren't quite latent students, but we weren't quite meeting their needs here in Elkhorn. So we looked to fill that void with what we had. And when we did that, next slide please. We took into consideration the least restrictive environment. So students who receive special education services should be in the same classrooms as kids with other kids as much as possible. So the least restrictive environment is the principle that guides every child's education. And it may look different because every child is unique. So on that note, I will turn it over to Mrs. Olden.
Sounds good. Can you put your next slide? So this is just kind of a snapshot of what RISE is. So RISE was really like the system I created. It's that highly specially designed kind of program for students in elementary school who have needs beyond our new model of the co-plan, co-serv. This also allows for students who are on an alternative curriculum, sensory needs, communication needs, some behavioral programming. So just kind of those pieces to capture all the students to make sure that they're in an environment that's appropriate for them. And then this is just a snapshot of our team. Obviously, there's plenty more people that are involved. But just speech pathologists, OTPT, myself, all of our care professionals, our school psych and social worker. Plus, like I said, there's just, I mean, lots of support from all around. So that's just our team. And then this is our kindergarten class. So we have three kindergartners and they push into the kindergarten classroom all day long, with the exception of a half an hour. So these are just some pictures of them being successful in the classroom, following directions, completing their work, raising their hand, participating. They do have aid support with them throughout the day, but just some exciting moments for them to capture through the kindergarten classroom. And then the next one is our second graders. Our second graders are in two different classrooms and they are pushing in for specials right now. So again, then just being involved with their class and their co-piers during special time. And then we also have a third grader and the third grader pushes in as well for specials. And then he's in there various times throughout the day as well. So he attended a field trip with his class. Goes in every morning for a morning meeting. And again, just with those typical peers throughout the day.
That a field trip to the high school.
Yep, that was the greenhouse as well. Yep. So then RISE also uses a curriculum called Unique and News to You. So we do news to you every day at the end of the day as part of our social studies curriculum. And then we also use Unique with one of our students that sounds such elements. So Unique and News to You is really a visual aid that helps those students with academic functional skills and transitions at an appropriate age that's relevant and meaningful to them. And then it also aligns with our Common Core standards and essential elements to align those Common Core standards with the LA Math Science and Social Studies. So at, oh, sorry. At the top there, those pictures are for each news to you program we do. So it has different news topics each week and it also comes with a recipe. Then we also sometimes will make the recipe to work on those life skills and pulling the math and all the other subjects together.
And then occupational therapy. I push in as much as I can, again, trying to be least restrictive versus pulling them again from already special ed. And I push in twice a week for this group called interoception. And one of the reasons where just going straight to a regular classroom is difficult is because of the emotional and sensory regulation difficulties they may have. And interoception is an entire curriculum where it looks at internally how are you feeling, recognizing those feelings, and then applying it to your emotions. So I have a stomach ache and instead of just being mad at everybody and maybe throwing your books or whatever, recognizing it is just a stomach ache and then communicating that it hurts and this is what I need to do to help myself. So we start from the very beginning with hands. How do my hands feel? I give them experiments, which is, I think I was painting their hands there. They hold ice cubes, they clench up, heat, all those different things. Yep, massage and feet, head, all of that inward. And then you even go internally about how even does your bladder feel, you know, so that you can recognize that sort of feeling. We have a student who's being successful at potty training at this point. So that's pretty exciting because he's in kindergarten and prior to that, he would not go. He's only going at school at this present time, not at home. But, so all those little life skills and kind of those feelings that are typically developing students don't necessarily even have to learn. It just comes innately. Well, not so sometimes with some students. So I push in twice a week to do that group. And once in a while, our school psychologist joins us. And then the next one, also as an occupational therapist, I'm looking at those fine motor skills. And so I go in and for those that need it, not all of them do. I mean, you have one student who last year in 4K, he was doing cursive handwriting. So it really wasn't appropriate for him. But others, I'll use the handwriting without tears curriculum and task box. So what's helpful to them is to see there's a beginning and an end to work. And so I start out at box one and that might be just some fine motor work. And then two, some terminology. Three is working on specifics as far as describing letters. And then fourth is into the handwriting books. So that's another part. And I also push into Ms. Olden's class twice a week doing that for a few students. Mrs. Whitman is not here. She's our speech language pathologist. There's two of them that push in. Or actually, they pull students out for individual speech time. But she just wanted to mention that there's visuals that a lot of these students benefit from because they can get confused in the language we say to them. And also sometimes they're inattention. They're stuck in their own minds as far as listening to a certain video or a certain song is stuck. And so there's visuals you can use as far as getting them to attend better. Whether you want them to do something, you know, this is a good behavior or not so good. Again, visuals. So a lot of our interventions has to do with visuals and then pairing it also with our verbalizations to them. So that she put in there. Sequencing is also sometimes difficult. So if we were just to pluck them into a regular education classroom and they were told, you know, hang up your book pack, get out your reading bag, come over to your desk, too much to sequence. So she works on sequencing that out. iPads, all of them have their own iPads as far as following a schedule. There's some, I guess. It's helpful with keeping them calm to know a schedule and to like go from, oh, done, done. I was, this is May done. And so all of them have a schedule. There are one non-verbal, there's one non-verbal student who has an iPad that is his communication device. We've been teaching him to use that. So that's probably good. One more. So these are some examples, but it doesn't look like they got.
So the first example was a student, our non-verbal student, who was kind of stuck during a speech session. So she just demonstrated how to use the picture visual that said pause your movie. And then the second one was the same student who is non-verbal using the iPad as his communication device to explain how she did the sequencing with them. So those were the two videos.
Thank you very much.
I think Miss Yulin is on there. Oh, sorry. Miss Yulin is our other speech pathologist that does pull out with our other kiddos. So she works with the kindergartners. So the first one is a visual social story that we use with our kindergartners when I feel frustrated and for different options that he can visually choose from. So when he's upset, he doesn't have to find those words to express how he's feeling. And then the second picture is a first then. So he knows first he works with Miss Kelly and then he gets to pick a word game after that. Again, just those visuals to help with that communication piece for working with pronouns, objects and pictures for describing things. And then the last thing is to work on the realistic pictures to expand sentences with more of that hands-on activity. And I think that's it.
Can I ask you, all of this is really great. Do you do anything working with the parents so that they continue the same type of education at home?
So we send a lot of social stories home. So we use social stories quite a bit in our classroom. So we will send all social stories home with parents. I'd say that's the biggest piece for them because to help with transitions. We've sent first then boards home, visuals for them.
Maybe share with them what a social story is.
Yeah. So a social story is just kind of written out words with simplified pictures and sentences to help students with change or something that they maybe stuck on. So it just kind of helps explain that this happens to everyone. We all have to do it just to be able to kind of calm their nerves and that anxiety piece of being able, you know, when they get stuck on something. And with most students with autism that's in our program, they kind of get that stuck piece. So they're, when they have autism, they just kind of, you know, they want that one activity or that task. So the social story kind of just explains to them how to work through that.
For instance, we have one student who going into kindergarten, the teacher, if he didn't get called on, big breakdown, run out of the classroom, very upset. So a social story was written to him and it's written for him specifically. And it's written to him before he goes into the classroom. I go into my kindergarten classroom and I sit and I listen to the teacher. If she doesn't call on me, it's okay. She'll call on me next time. And then, so it's basically written, so it's read. What is that? Is that first person? First, in first person. Yes. So that, but then we'll do home ones specifically, like for the child who is having difficulty generalizing that he uses the bathroom at school, but not at home. You know, a social story could get written about, I use the bathroom at school. It's very personal. It's very personal. Which is, that's why it really takes a village. You saw how many people are on there. Yeah.
And for a student with our device for communication, as we build that capacity for him in school, we'll start to transition that at home as well so that they can use the device that helps with communication.
Any other questions?
I'm amazed. I came here six years ago in Elkhorn for SCLA. I gave you a shirt. Thank you. I know it's hard work.
I reward it though for us, for sure.
Yeah, and on the other side too.
Yeah, good, good.
I was surprised at the hands that were walking.
See, that's why I asked, what do we do for the parents? I mean, this is great in this setting, but you need to continue it. And so that's why I asked.
And then whenever we talk to parents, I always remind them they're not always there to help the students, but be there to support the parents as well and, you know, provide those supplements at home that they need too. Success at school happens at home too.
I would like to thank, you know, Mr. Silbera approached the team last year and it was just last year, right? First year as associate principal and he stepped up and said, hey, this is a greater gap that we're seeing. And he was a strong advocate for us to get the program put in place. And Oldling came over after resignation, probably through the year, and stepped up and said, I'll do it and take the reins. And it's much appreciated. And, you know, Diane and the work of the rest of the team. It's really neat to see where it's come this first year despite some of those trials that we had to get started. So thank you very much.
Yes.
It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really exciting to hear about all the life skills pieces that are being done at the elementary level. And I was very excited about the recipe. I'm a culinary arts teacher as well as the FCLA advisor, family career and community leaders in America. And we are here to do a little bit of bragging and then to ask for your permission to attend an upcoming event. So I'm gonna actually have Katie lead us off. You might remember her from a couple of months ago. And she's gonna talk a little bit about her event and the request.
So it's good to be back here again. I'm glad that we're asking for permission to go farther in our competitions. So I went to state and I competed in entrepreneurship then. And my task was to create a 20-minute presentation and I had to create a business from the ground up, basically. There were very little restrictions as long as the business had to do with FCS teaching and FCS curriculum. So I created a sustainable grocery store as my business. And so what I had to do is I had to find where will this be located? How much is it to start up this business? Where am I getting these funds from? Who's supplying me? Who are my, who's my demographic? How am I going to get my business out there? Advertise it, market it? So it really was a lot of work, a lot of background information. And it was super cool to kind of learn about the business aspect of creating a business because I really didn't know much about it before. So I went to state and I presented it and talked to the judges. And I ended up winning top gold and qualified for nationals. It was a great experience overall. Specifically, I learned a lot of tips about how to present an idea effectively. And I think that's a really important life skill and that's something that I'm going to bring with me from this competition post-secondary school for sharing, probably as my career field as well. And I also had these two also competed at state. Now I can let them, please, if you want to start about your event.
So I did a presentation. It was over 10 minutes on saying I said yes. So I plan on going into community suicide education after high school. So the presentation, I just did some research about two schools in Wisconsin and then I did an Alexi school. And I sat in on a TCE class and a community suicide class. And then I also interviewed teachers from the community suicide education and learned a ton more about learning oriental.
So I was in culinary arts. So I had an hour and I worked with two other people to make three courses. And so I did it at regionals and then I made it to state and then I got a gold. So I'm going to nationals for cooking. And in nationals, I have, I think, four hours to cook three dishes. Four hours to cook three dishes. So.
As long as you don't have Chef Ramsay there.
Well, that's a lot more time than I want to. Yeah. If you want to practice and prepare and. We'd be happy to assist you on your journey.
We're lucky. They're all very modest. They worked very hard to get where they are. We went to the food show. Last time we came, we talked to you about the food show. We went to the food show last week and Katie came back. She was like all excited. She's, oh, I just met with somebody about sustainability and I was talking to them about their project. I think I'm gonna include them on my project. And, you know, it's just, it's very exciting for me as a teacher. What are your career aspirations, Diane?
Oh, so I want to go into family suicide education as well. And I got accepted to go to Stow. Just continuing my lovely journey and I'm gonna take over, consume my job.
That's what you're always supposed to do as a teacher. You're supposed to grow the next generation to replace you. So I've grown too. So Stacy and I, we've got an endgame here. So we'll protect you. So we are excited. This is the first time I, this is my sixth year at Elkhorn. This is the first time we've had three students qualify and want to go. It's all the way in San Diego. It does rotate. So this is the rotation. So as you can imagine, it's quite pricey to attend, but it is one of those kind of once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for the students. And the fact that we have three students that are in three different categories is quite unique as well because many schools kind of specialize in one particular area and they send students regularly. So we're very excited about our participation. As you see in the picture, we had a lot of kids, this was our biggest group ever, and we just did, I mean, outstanding. I'm really very proud of each and every one of them. So the reason that we are here is to ask, of course, for your permission to attend the event. It is held June 29th through July the 3rd. For some reason, this family-focused organization always has their competitions around the 4th of July. But we, again, seek your permission to attend. We're gonna be staying at a conference hotel, which is right next to the convention center. They'll have some opportunities for some networking, some socializing. We'll obviously be attending some FCLA-related meetings, but we'll also have the opportunity to go to the San Diego. So we'll get to take in some local, local things. And the students will compete in a very bizarre schedule. They're all competing on the same day. And so that would be a jam-packed day for them. So do you have any questions for them?
How many students total are on?
Just to.
Oh, just use the rate. Okay, got it.
Yep.
And I agree that you're, it's fundraising events, just doing that. Do you have any that, I know you do a lot of them that are in the school where it's during lunch where the kids can come by. Do you do anything outside of that?
We actually cannot sell during lunch because of the smart set.
Okay, but you do like a separate time or something, right?
Most of our financial things that have been coming in are catering events.
Oh.
So we cater like the Hall of Fame events in the fall. We did a national honor society induction. We just did last week, the community conversations, I think it was called, for this center of resiliency. So, you know, we fill kind of that pocket when people need catering. And we've done like traditional fundraisers. Around Christmas time, we sold cutlery. That was really a very popular thing as well.
We'll always see to the school because we're not always in there and know what's going on.
Right.
If it's mostly catering to the event, so I get that.
Susan, are we okay with just doing, going with advisor because of how this is due?
Actually, Mrs. Broward is also just in attending because Katie needs to come back a day early.
Okay.
And so she is going to attend, but she will, of course, pay her own portion.
Everybody's standing up. What's that? Yeah, it's nice to have the second one.
It's just an occasional emergency. Yeah. Nothing will happen.
No. I guess we need a formal motion for approval for overnight. So looking for a motion.
I moved to approve the overnight travel asked from the FCLA as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second into a preview overnight travel request from the FCLA as presented. All those in papers say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Mrs. Waymeyer, follow up with myself. It's something with the education foundation. You'd probably be happy to help them. And, yeah, the trip also, because we do need the two chaplains, we can, yeah, the foundation or something.
Thank you. And we'll be going, we have a meeting with the Booster Club next week. So if you're willing to help us because we help them with their catering. So.
Yeah, so we're in touch.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Come back in less.
I would ask for a request if we could make a slight adjustment to the agenda. The social workers shut up in our building. For their presentation, we might be allowed to.
It was quiet here. My house.
We want to get them back to the chaos.
I don't find it seem very quiet. Probably from outside.
I don't want. Where else is it? I got people being thrown throw pens.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start a thought, but then I'm gonna let them kind of share a little bit about the work we've been doing. So we kind of established this collaborative group mid-year. It was probably even right after Christmas. Kind of in response to the increased kind of mental health need that we were seeing in our students this year. And we had waiting lists that were pretty long already, like before mid-year even hit. So we kind of pulled together to kind of look at where, where are we at? Where do we go from here? How do we, how do we better all Jason's students?
We might have to assist you. No, 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 no. There you go.
I'll talk so we're not watching. So we, so yeah, so we got together because we were, you know, kind of twofold. You know, if there are additional partnerships, the district has worked for freedom for several years. Are there additional partnerships we can establish? What services can we provide within our buildings? How can we really leverage everybody working together to look at how to meet this increased demand? So that's kind of the reason why we band together. Additional people were also on that committee. We had school counselors from every level. We had all the school sites, all the social workers. These were just the brave souls that, that were going to come share a little bit more about our work with you tonight. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and then we'll kind of get into this.
Keep them platter and apologize. I feel fine. School psych worker at the high school.
I'm Kristin Mariano. I'm the school psychologist at the middle.
Chris, also school psychologist at high school and also mental health navigator at Options.
I'm Meg Casper. I'm the mental health navigator at CCA SOFOs. And then I also tend to put up the calendar.
Jason, do you want me to re-share it with you?
No, me? I think I logged in such work. I just have to figure out where I'm here. Now it's too big for me to.
Okay, so obviously there's been a lot of work happening in Elkhorn for quite a while in relation to building a system that supports all students' mental health and wellbeing. There's been a lot of work done at tier one. There's been a lot of work kind of already in motion with community partners. So I want to give these guys a chance to kind of speak a little bit about where we've been on that journey. A little bit more about the mental health navigator roles and update on that. And then we'll get into kind of expanding those partnerships and responding to the need. Keeping in mind that all of this is a work in progress, but we thought this is a good time to update you. So I'm gonna let Kristen and Chris lead us, lead us up. And I already talked through that slide, Jason, so you can get to the next one.
So if you click onto the next slide, it talks about the current framework. And last year, as part of Elkhorn. And last year, as part of Elkhorn School District's continuous improvement system for staff, Chris and I had teamed to do a review and evaluation of where we are at as far as meeting students' mental health needs. And recognizing that a lot of work had already been done prior to us doing this evaluation. But we looked at best practices and then where Elkhorn was at as far as our current practices. And, you know, despite all the work that had been done, ultimately what we found is that there's more work that needs to be done. From that evaluation, we offered some recommendations and some of those included a need to continue building a continuum of mental health supports and services for our Elkhorn students' mental health needs. And also a need to continue to align the roles and responsibilities of our staff to address those needs. So the left visual is Chris and my title page of our, our presentation. But then below that is what DPI puts out as far as what the school mental health framework is that schools should try to consider when they're providing those services.
That was really good. The only thing that I'd like to add is as we were going through this process, we, we found that there was a lot of work that has been done across multiple buildings. Aligning all of that and bringing that all together into one cohesive model is something that we would really like to see. And this is something that this group has been working on and collaborating with to really bring it all together into fruition so that we can really see what that looks like in long-term sustainability as well. And so while we have places that we can refer to here in town, we also have places that we can refer to outside. And that's where we're bringing it all together into one solid model is one of the recommendations, something that we're really starting.
On up.
So I'm back again. So in 2018, the mental health framework really expanded. That's because the school district and the county actually partnered to form the mental health navigator role. And that is a dual role within the district and the county, so I'm in both entities at that time. So how does it work? Seventy-five percent school-based, so I'm based in the Carrington College Academy and also SOFOs. And then I'm twenty-five percent within the county. So this position has been successful. They've been collecting a lot of data since 2018. And what it, what it has shown is that there is a significant increase in the amount of referrals and enrollment to following services that are listed right there specifically within the county and also at public providers that I can help connect families and students to. In addition, what's nice about this is I can help students and families navigate and support them through child welfare systems, youth justice. We do a lot of wraparound team meetings to come together altogether and streamline referrals and communication between county and school district. And the best thing about this, I think, is we're continuing to bridge the systems that impact for students' mental health the most. And that, I think, has just been a really positive partnership and collaboration between the county and our school district.
I would just add, from a personal experience in working with state families and all the students, that, that bridge into the CCS or the CCS, the Comprehensive Community Services and the FFT is so critical because they're completely voluntary. So even though it's there and it's available, you've got to have that connection of that, that trust or that willingness to sign up and go and get that helpless there. And I would say it's probably the most readily available because if you've ever been in that situation where you had to get someone mental health supports, they're waiting months unless they're in such an extreme crisis where their life is at risk. And even then, it's okay, you're in for a couple of days and then you're discharged and you're waiting months until you can get that support. So I can say from a personal experience and working through those organizations, that's made a huge impact. And I think having that sort of position, that connection, it's great to hear that we're seeing very utilization of those services.
Do you think families are more willing to come to you and talk to you because you're already in the school district? You're not like the bad guy from the county?
Absolutely. I love this role. I come from health protective services too, but yeah.
That's amazing.
But yeah, I, I do think it's open, that communication up a lot more. And I can come at it kind of as that outsider and third party kind of much more say that.
It's great.
So as Jason alluded to, it can be long to get students and for support. And to us, it's not always accessible. I mean, sometimes we need to get them anyway. And so I stepped into this mental health navigator role at Options earlier this year with really a vision and a mission. My, my vision was to provide equitable service delivery model that transcends multiple platforms. Really, when we're looking at options, options is about increasing students' choices. Options is also virtual. And so I started thinking, well, we also have students that are across the state. We don't have students just here in Elkhorn, but we have students up in Green Bay area, in Surry, Wisconsin, over in Milwaukee. And they're coming under the same barriers that we're having here. So we really need to find a way to expand these opportunities and to open doors for our students. So that's really been my, my mission this year is to really try to find ways to have a broader reach for all of our students in mental health and trying to help them to, to navigate systems to be able to get support. So currently, it's still a work in progress, but it's, it's being built. We have a network right now of fifty-two different potential providers across the state that we can pick up the phone and call at any moment. Some of them are around Elkhorn, some of them are around different areas of the state, all the way up to the superior area. So we have capabilities. Within there, it's about a fifty percent rate of openings right now. So not all of them are currently taking referrals, but there is fifty percent of those that are. That, again, opens up doors and pathways for our students. So we're going to continue to build this, this referral model for our students. We've partnered with a few different people this year, and again, they're still work in progress. We've partnered with TogetherAll. TogetherAll right now, we're in, one of the processes where it talks of, of trying to create an online community for all of our students from thirteen to eighteen years old that provides them twenty-four hour access to mental health support online. It's also a community for students to be able to, while talking and working with students, it provides different journals and mental health opportunities for students to take part in. It's a really neat community. TogetherAll right now is working on saying, hey, are we able to have this capability for that thirteen to, I should say thirteen to seventeen? Right now, they work on that eighteen to twenty-two year old range, and they partner with a lot of universities across the country. So that's still a work in progress. But we've also partnered with Grief Coach. Grief Coach has provided us several different trials for students and our, our staff that are in a grieving process. So we've had students and we've had staff members that have lost family members throughout this year. And we've been able to provide them free of charge this year with trials to Grief Coach. Grief Coach is a really cool opportunity as well. It's not, it's not your typical face-to-face therapy sessions. But what it does is it, it reaches out to your community and to your support network and provides them ideas and ways that they can help support you. So if I had a loved one that died and I signed up for Grief Coach, I could put in friends and family into it and they would receive texts and emails for ways that they could support me in my grieving process. It's actually a really neat thing that is still on their ground floor. And I'm helping the, the Grief Coach area maybe even build their platform into maybe something like Anxiety Coach and Parenting Coach because it's a really cool platform to reach multiple people. Again, it's about opening up doors, reducing barriers and helping our students provide additional mental health services and support. That's really what we're working on this year.
I like the idea where you added on the different, you would like to see on those different aspects to anxiety and all that because too many times people have these roadblocks so they don't know how to navigate it. They don't have help to navigate it.
Well, and sometimes our support network doesn't even know how to support us.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's a roadblock because you just don't know where to go.
Right. We need to go see our therapist or their therapist or months out.
Right, right.
This next slide is just kind of a reminder going back to when Phil and Amy came, I think I remember a month ago, I speak with you about the kind of highlights from that Hester Roadshow as they got the stakeholder input. And I think it's just worth kind of mentioning that this all, this all aligns. So some of those top, top areas that were identified by the groups they met with really revolved around, you know, that whole idea of people are struggling and how do we respond? So I, I think that's just worth kind of tying together as another, you know, reason or it's just to kind of keep this moving forward and to continue to build our continuum of services and our network. So that's why I kind of do that. And Caitlin?
Well, yeah.
Is going to talk to us about why, why in schools? Why is the school the platform for this?
Yes. Okay, so why school-based mental health? So in terms of like the families that we work with and the different students, it's been really great in reducing some of those other like logistical barriers, transportation. Students are already at school, so when the therapists are based inside the building, we can easily coordinate it. If the student's absent that day, you know, we have different staff that works to reschedule that appointment. And the therapists that we've worked with have been great by putting them in, like, okay, they are here today. Do you have an opening? So we're kind of able to, to see them more, whereas in a community, that's just so much more difficult. Overall, it reduces the time that they are out of the building or in class because we have a lot of students that struggle with attendance and consistency. And so when they're able to be in school, feel safe, what they're working on, some of those issues that are maybe the root cause of the attendance, and they do end up, big picture, long-term being in class more. Students are, are comfortable, hopefully with at least, you know, a few of our staff members and so not having to leave and go to a building that they're not familiar in. It just really helps them to be able to feel safer so that they can open up and have those connections with their therapists. Again, it, it increases that access to actual licensed therapists and clinicians that are trained to treat these mental health issues that we're seeing. And it's really nice too because we can have these wraparound meetings with teachers, counselors, social workers, and the therapists to say, you know, this is what we're seeing in class. They may not share this with you. And then, you know, we kind of all come to the table to see that full picture. And parents are really involved as well, the communication between therapists, parents, and school staff. So it's just been a really great team.
So kind of too, just to, before Jason zooms in on that one, the, the people up there, the images are all current partnerships. So, you know, we're currently working with Credence. PSG is a new partner this year. Mercy Health, new partner this year. New Beginnings. Team Counseling, Grief Coach, TogetherAll, the ones Chris just mentioned. So those are all, you know, current partnerships and we're looking at how do we, how do we continue to expand that?
What's, what's Team Counseling?
Was that the one that we were just referencing, right?
Yeah, yeah. So Team Counseling is, it's a, I don't know if people have heard of BetterHelp. But BetterHelp typically works with older adults. Team Counseling is, it's a network of counselors specifically for teens. So, and honestly, it's immediate access to a mental health professional, which is great. And, and the rates start at like sixty-five to eighty-five dollars an hour, but they also take insurance and they do take muscle insurances. So on the options side of things, again, breaking down barriers, opening doors, we've provided that team counseling to a lot of our, our students and to some of our parents as far as being able to get immediate support just because it just takes so long. I know I was on the other side of this early on this year where I was calling around to Aurora and to a few other places and it was three to six months. And it was, that's not acceptable. We experience that now. And that's where Team Counseling came in, is we were able to find a online source that could provide immediate attention.
So looking at some different referral pathways, it's kind of similar to what Jenny pointed out too. You know, we're already in the school and hopefully have those relationships with parents. And so, you know, when they call, we just need some help. Kind of giving that warm handoff to, you know, an agency or a therapist has been really helpful. So between the school social workers and school counselors, school sites, we submit all of those referrals and then, again, there's a lot of coordination and kind of figuring that out. Then that'll be a piece too for, hopefully when we partner with more agencies, getting kind of a clear path for what that referral process looks like. And then again, it builds our relationships too with those agencies because we are working with them constantly. So it's just nice because you stay up on your programming and things that are offering too because that, that's changed. And then this is our current status across the building. So we have six licensed therapists that are coming in to see and work with students and as well as three interns and externs. A hundred and nine students are currently receiving a school-based mental health therapy services throughout the district. The students on that waiting list, I believe that is for Credence specifically because we have, we keep making referrals even though we have, there's waiting lists and hopes. Maybe they can get that connection before the summer starts because they do have options and they continue to see that therapist throughout the summer. We do have some groups going, so New Beginnings, they're currently running through throughout the district. Mercy is doing two different anxiety groups. And then Beloit, a great hospital, is doing some grief groups as well. So, you know, again, we're hoping to expand that because we've just seen that need increase so much.
And those groups are all happening in school?
Correct, yes.
How do the students function for the rest of the day? I mean, I don't know, it's a period. Like, so the teachers kind of told, like, hey, we did a grief group today?
Yeah, so it depends on the topic. And some of them too, like if it's help more like the grief groups, I think. I wish Taylor, how did she, she could speak to that a little bit more because they're in total trouble. But having them more at the end of the day, if needed. But yes, counselors be aware that, hey, this group's going on today, so you might need a little more help. And yeah, so kind of that internal FYI.
That's great.
So then that kind of brings us to our next, our next steps. And so like we alluded to there, continuing to forge those partnerships. We currently have conversations and the work with CA Counseling over in the Golden State is where they're located. And then also speaking with children through the treehouse. So looking at definitely, and then throughout the summer, you know, trying to reach out to other local agencies and see if there's an interest. With that though, as Caitlin alluded to, there is a lot of work that needs to occur in terms of streamlining those referral processes across building who are key point people. We don't want every single people service provider doing that because then that takes away from the work that they're doing with students too. So we're trying to come up with a system that makes sense for the staffing, staffing model we have. Who's kind of going to be coordinating that space, those appointments, ensuring teachers and everybody are aware of when the students are coming down. So that's kind of the work we're doing right now with the hopes of then being able to share that out to the district and to the families in the fall. We're also working on outlining those small group interventions that can be available at each level for those high need areas such as anxiety and depression, coping with stress. And then aligning as Chris and Kristen spoke about, you know, what are the, the roles within our people service department? And really making that manageable for them and what makes sense in our system and how do we both respond to the need, but also stay in tune with what's on their plates as well as we try to coordinate all of this. So we're, you know, we're looking at continuing to try to build that continuum and outlining kind of those rules as far as, you know, who needs services, how do we identify them? How do we get parents in action? As we all know, as, you know, those of us who have kids, sometimes we see issues at home first. And so wouldn't it be nice to get ahead of it and also allow parents to refer for those services in the school building as well? So that's kind of the work we're doing. We're really excited about it. It's been a great, you know, group of people who have very productive conversations and, and we all, I think, are dedicated to the cause and wanting to get that forward.
Thank you for that work. I can't think of a time that's been more important than lots of years and probably for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Another resource I just learned of that's really coming on board is Children's Hospital is opening a mental health line.
Oh, it's great.
Which will allow people just like an urgent care.
It's very open, they have hours, yeah. My fund's neuro equipment is right next door, so when we went for his last neuro exam. Second week of March, we were there for two days and it was open. It's fully staffed and they have hours of operation and you don't have to. It's on the main campus in Milwaukee, yeah.
And what's, it doesn't solve the referral. But what it does is it gives them immediate care and they can give medication if needed immediately where they don't have to wait six months to get that. And I'm sure they probably schedule a follow-up in the meantime while they're waiting to get the primary care.
So the, the main campus of Children's and the clinic did an addition and combined the two. So it's, yeah, we've been watching it be built ever since the brain injury and, um, it's on the second floor, but it's, it's so exciting. I didn't know anything about it until I was like, oh my gosh.
I've gone up there a lot lately with my son and the first time I saw it, I didn't take a picture of it.
Oh, I do too, actually, I have it on my phone. I've gotten everything I said, yeah. Yeah, it's very nice.
It's a very secure building too with lots of job unemployment space. They just can't hire enough and I know when I talk to the state legislators and I appreciate that they put money and resources towards schools for mental health, but I think one of the other challenges is, you know, allow the counties and the other infrastructure to be properly funded so they can put resources there because it does feel like, well, that's a lot to push back to schools to.
And if the personnel aren't there anyway, then it makes it hard for one school to try to hire someone when it could be resources shared amongst a larger area.
All right. Let's go back to election of the school, we have to elect the school board officer. We should start with the president, the current president, I'll yield chair to Mrs. Fisher.
All right, so I guess I should ask for nominations for the office of president.
I nominate Matt O'Donnell for the office of president.
Do we have any other nominations? One more time, do we have any other nominations? Since we have only one nomination, um, could we have a motion to close the nominations and then a majority vote be cast for the nominee? Who is Matt O'Donnell?
I'd like a motion to close the nominations.
And, um, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, we have a, a motion and a second to, for Matt O'Donnell as president, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion is carried if you would like to continue on as president.
Moving on, we need a vice president. Looking for nominations for the position of vice president.
I'll nominate Mark Fisher for the office of vice president.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd ask that we promote a motion to close nominations and cast a majority vote for Mark Fisher as vice president.
So moved.
So moved a second in for Mark Fisher for vice president, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried, need a clerk, who's currently Jenny Ray, looking for nominations for the position of clerk.
I'm gonna nominate Jenny Ray.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, it asks that a majority, that we close the nomination period, ask for a majority vote be cast for Jenny Ray for clerk. So moved again, is there a second?
Second.
Moved a second in to, to close nominations and a majority vote be cast for Jenny Ray as clerk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Should carry.
You're right, you can ask first.
All right, now the treasurer, need a nomination for the position of treasurer.
I nominate Julia Ingersoll.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, it asks that we close nominations and cast a majority vote for Julia as treasurer.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved a second in to close nominations and cast a majority vote for Julia as treasurer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Make fun of that, Julia?
Yes.
All right, and then we need a deputy clerk. It's important this year, especially since the clerk is up for reelection. This currently added. Do we have a nomination for deputy clerk?
We nominate, it's true.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I'd look for a motion to close nominations and cast a majority vote for Inscaro as deputy clerk. Is there a second?
No, second.
Move the second in to close nominations and cast majority vote for Inscaro as deputy clerk, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ed, do you accept?
Yeah, yes.
I'm not allowed. You're too late, you're too late. Got that taken care of, so schoolware minutes from April eleventh attached to your agenda. Questions, comments, concerns? Any comments? Hearing none, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, regular session schoolwork meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move the second to approve the minutes of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, regular session schoolwork meeting as presented. Go public, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz.
Yes.
Ms. Worfing.
Yes.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Truman.
This evening's general and other fund bills covers checks number one four five nine seven seven through one four six one one five. Wire transfers fourteen fifty-five through fourteen fifty-nine and ACH checks number five one five through five three four in a combined amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. And then there's a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in your port packet and then a copy of the treasury report for the month of March. Is that the end?
Questions for Mr. Truman?
I just have a couple of questions. One kind of pertains to, um, I just saw a lot of expenditures on books. Is that normal this time of year and is it because they're kind of seeing where their balances are at the end of the year and they're?
Yes, and the other part, some of that is library related, so it's a common school funds as well.
Okay.
We get kind of a preliminary number and then we don't get our final number until like March.
Got it.
So then the librarians are coordinating those quarters.
So they just kind of wait for the time of year to?
Yeah, because the state doesn't release the allocation until like the end of January to have the school funds, so.
Yeah, it just seemed like a significantly large amount of books getting ordered this time of year, so. Okay, my next question is, um, I saw we have, we still have a balance of a hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-three cents in Fund Forty-nine, um, for the, um, options. The options renovations.
Correct.
Um, is that money been allocated for something or are there still other things that need to be done or?
It's, it's still part of the payments on the remaining part of the project. So there's still some retainages there, plus the last thing is really is, is completing the asphalt work and then there's, there's a drainage pipe that they need to put along the back. And we thought it would be best to wait till school's out because of disruption. So that would be June.
Okay.
So we probably won't close it out till maybe July.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure where all of those things were at. Great.
Good question.
Surprised we still have some asbestos.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
With all the renovations we've done, I felt we got a little bit of all.
It was, it was kind of a surprise, we didn't know we had asbestos until we took out the old cabinets and found that they didn't, we placed that tile underneath.
Okay.
So they must have just put the cabinets on the old.
Yeah, because if you don't disturb it, you don't have to muck it with the correct.
Correct.
That's probably why.
Yeah, if you're gonna have it, floor tiles the best place to kind of have it.
Right.
It's considered non-criable.
Right.
As far as we know, there's not, there's not a lot of, I mean.
There, there really isn't, um, I, I don't want to say we're a hundred percent free, but we're getting.
You always find stuff in old buildings.
We have, I think, two or three classrooms on the second floor of the high school. But if you walk up there, I mean, those floors, they're the nine-inch tile and they've been.
Did we have a lot of asbestos work to do in the, the options building?
Or? We did.
Because of the kitchen. Well, the kitchen was breaking apart too.
Yeah, I mean, they basically got it that way.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Hacking installation.
Yeah, I think they did a bit of that stuff, didn't they? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, off the top of his, I get three hundred thousand for the asbestos of it.
It was almost a month of work in Dallas area.
I know, that was one thing that worried me about.
We got the ceiling spray which we were really worried was encapsulating the.
Right, yeah, right, yeah.
So it was just really terrible.
Right, right.
But then they periodically threw it, they chuck it too, so.
They did, yeah. They had to do what they called six months.
Other questions, Mr. Truman? Hearing none, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, check numbers one four five nine seven seven to one four six one one five. Wire numbers one four five five to one four five nine. ACH check numbers five one five to five three four in a combined amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second to approve the general and other fund bills of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, checks numbers one four five nine seven seven to one four six one one five. Wire numbers one four five five to one four five nine, ACH check number one five one five to five three four in a combined amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scaro.
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz.
Yes.
Ms. Worfing.
Yes.
Should carry. Back to reporting the discussion on the student part.
It's in your Gmail. It's a little bit late, it doesn't make it out of thing, but it is in your Gmail.
Oh, my eyes are whippy in here.
Oh, there you go.
And we're gonna hyper weekend, so what if we have the agenda we have?
Sounds good. I'll just have to close this off. All right, awesome. There you go, okay, so last week, Wednesday, we had our Oxford Patrick's Olympics, which went very, very well. I think Warren had it go.
We have over five thousand dollars right now.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's amazing. It's amazing, well, I had the honor of running the Just Dance section. And I gotta admit, it was so funny watching Mr. Cleveland have to do Just Dance. So it was my, the best dress of, I think, of all the stations. So much fun, I have a video. Anyways, our four-by-four team, which is Kaylee Reynolds, Yara Conley, Emily Fider and Lily Cooper beat, um, the record that was placed forty-three years ago by three seconds. So they were really hustling. And they did the set of concerts relay. Super impressive, super impressive. And then we had prom this weekend too, and our prom king was Boren Forster, the prom queen was Sam. What is her last name? Kotlers, I don't know how to say it, Kotlers, and super cute, super fun. At the middle school, um, the E A, E A sister had drawn one of the academic bowl and they're competing against Waterloo for Accademy Jefferson, Whitewaters, that was always fun, I remember doing the academic bowl. Mudzaku Concrete was sharing their skills and showcasing their work today for the outdoor classroom foundation. And they're building an outdoor classroom at the middle school now, so that's really cool. And then they're also dissecting the sheep's brain in the Strickland Brothers' class. Yeah, I didn't make it really big, so you guys will have to look at it. Jackson Student Council started painting a project for the school in the bathrooms, which I think is so funny. And nailed it, DIY helped with that, so like made the, all the like stencils for it. And they had the creativity conference for the elementary schools, which I loved when I was a kid, that was so much fun. So this girl did it on slots, which is about, I thought that was awesome. And then fourth grade artist earned about, um, pop art or like the pop art that you can make, which I love, was also just as fun. At Tivitz. Um, student council had a week-long donation drive for the animal shelter and they picked up a lot of items, so they're very, very happy about that. You see those little two cards. Miss Jennifer came and visited the first graders, which was always fascinating as a kid, whenever somebody came and read to you. And then the fourth graders, um, played map twenty-four and had some winners. Do you remember that as a kid as well? I know, I love all this stuff because it reminds me of elementary school, map twenty-four was the past. West Side, they celebrated Earth Day, um, another creativity conference participant. And the kindergartners also went to field trip at the gymnastics center. College and Career Academy, they had to open a house and they said the trail was incredible, we knew just a few cat, like photos of it. And I options also had, like, they had some kids, this was the Abba one, which I don't think kids would know about Abba, but I guess that's really cool. I love Abba. So they had that and then they also were practicing for their spring cancer. So you see the kids out there practicing, that's adorable. Yeah, update. Abba, did it say Abba? They had good music.
What you got in your brain?
Next time.
Thank you. All right, we have a first reading of revised, there's not much of a revision to this policy.
Yeah, no.
Everybody can agree.
Literally.
There we go.
Legal reference.
Policy committee.
My concern was, when you look at the dates, um, it wasn't the lawdy system back then, but it was pointed out that the numbering system did not change, therefore we just go in systematic after that. But that was my first thing is like, wait, adopted, that really wasn't adopted then, but that was the original. Great policy number, yeah. But that was what drew my attention, I would say.
Yeah, so the policy committee did look and discuss whether or not to make any changes to determine not to. However, since we reviewed that piece, Jody pointed out that these references were no longer relevant, so. The shortest first reading. It's other than just delete it. Any questions?
Recommendation to district administrator.
All right.
Personnel.
Personnel, okay. First off, Jack Baron, we want to give him thanks for his many years of service to the school district. He doesn't want any pomp and circumstance, but it's public records, so too bad you all get to know.
I emailed him, I couldn't hear back, so it's kind of disappointing.
Yeah, well, you might hear back.
See you, Mitchell.
I want to thank him for all of his service. Sabrina Sabella, I really want to thank her for her service. We had a resignation the first week of school. And Sabrina had stepped away last year to stay at home with a pretty young family. And she came back and filled that position, which was a huge help at the beginning of the year. You know, we were still in the midst of a pandemic, you know, so.
Yeah.
Want to really thank her for her service and coming back. Mr. Lewandowski has been with us several years, we want to thank him for his service. He's been working as an editor part-time as well. And he's shifting over to do that full-time, so we want to thank him for his service. Mr. Birch is really moving closer to home down at Wilmot. He's a high school social studies teacher, want to thank him for his time here in the district. And then we have Tana Platts, who served as a special education teaching assistant. Abigail Flash, who served as a girls assistant coach at the high school. We have a number of new hires. Allison Smith as a Jackson kindergarten teacher, who should really be thanking Mr. Gehart for letting her know that that job opening was there. Yeah, he didn't get her the job, but she got her materials in just in time to be considered. So she was very happy for her. Alyssa Caliendo is a Jackson kindergarten teacher. Rebecca Solner is a Westside special education teacher. Jonathan Watson is a SOFO special education teacher. And we're very excited, I mean, we're very excited to have all of these people. We've got some just great hires coming in. And Manelli is a special education teacher. We put down to be determined because we have some internal, we know we have the position. It's just where are we going to place people based on the best fit after the hiring season was over. Angela Woodside is a Tivitz special education teaching assistant. Ashley Warner is a Westside special education assistant. Ryan Middlestead will be serving as the high school treasurer.
That's cool. Is Ryan a girl or a guy?
A girl.
Okay. She's a girl?
Other questions?
Yeah, I should have stated that, I'm sorry.
Here are no questions, look for motion.
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April 25th, 2022, including employment contracts, condition upon testing, background checks, and district pending drug speed as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moved to second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April 25th, 2022, including employment contracts, condition upon testing, background check, and district administrative screen as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
School gifts. All right, we have a, once we'll get to present this evening, the Elkhorn Area School District Education Foundation, on behalf of the Kiwanis, who donated $10,000 to the middle school for their outdoor classroom. So sometimes donations or organizations need to work through a 501, see three non-public entities. So by establishing the education foundation, we allow that, so. It's really corny.
That's brilliant. That's amazing. That's really smart.
Looking for a motion to approve generous gift?
So move?
A second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the generous gift of the Kiwanis Club or the Elkhorn Education Foundation on behalf of the Kiwanis Club as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Second reading of policy or handbook signals.
Yeah, there were a number of modifications there that we reviewed in the last meeting. Were there any questions on any of those that we want to go through?
I had a couple, I just need to click find them here. Oh, one under 10.4 on the first page, where it says, "Up to 40 hours of PTO not used by the end of the work here, shall..." "B" needs to stay in there. If you go up.
In the work here, on birds.
No, go up. Yeah, and that's the right-hand paragraph, first paragraph.
Yep, "shall be paid out," is that what you said?
"Shall be paid out," yeah. So "B" needs to stay. Fourth, fifth, now they're going to delete it.
Let's see, I don't have an edit access, but, okay.
No, they can't be done.
Let's see if I can comment.
I can make a note too, Jason.
All right, I'm sure Jody will get that. So 10.4, the "B" needs to be unstripped. Okay, good catch.
And then I have one other just kind of clarification thing. Under 12.3 Crisis Leave Guidelines, in the second paragraph of that, it says, "If a paid leave request is not approved, the employee may appeal the decision to the school board. The employee must file a written appeal with the school or with the board president within seven days." My question is, within seven days of what? Like, it doesn't define within seven days of...
Of rejection.
Yeah, like, should, I think it, I think it needs to be clearly stated. Yeah, clearly stated, of within seven days of...
Of receiving, receiving the denial.
Right.
And I wonder also, this would be the only thing that should, should the requests or the written appeal, and do you want to submit it directly to the board president or should they send it to the district administrator?
I think this request...
Other appeals normally...
It all goes through the district administrator, the schedule.
That makes sense.
Handle the schedule.
Then they should be done consistently then, if that's how the other ones are done then.
I believe so. On the personnel matters and the handbooks, that would, they would notify, it'd go through the district administrator, notify.
Right.
They basically have a right to appeal to the board.
Sure.
Putting it right into the district administrator within seven days.
Because what if the, the, the board president is out of town and not checking emails? So it would make more sense administrator, because...
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we can modify that as well.
Another detail, I want to contribute, seven like business days or seven.
That's another, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, if it's seven, I would assume that's calendar days, so we should add calendar days.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Why is it seven? I know all of our HR wants to test. Just curious.
We can change it.
We can change it.
But this was, we just make this up. It kept was a week, you know.
Right, yeah, I'm trying to make it, if we're changing the other...
Yeah, it's a calendar day.
We're basically, all of our title nine, seven, ten days, that's why I'm just saying.
Well, and I would, if it's 10, that would usually be business days, two weeks.
Right.
Seven calendar days is one week, that's where, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
The challenge is on the business days is, well then, well, if it's in the summer and that person's not scheduled to work, does that count as a business day or not? So I think we could just say 14 calendar days.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then the other thing, two weeks.
That's fine.
I think we probably put that, you know, I would have to ask Taylor, but I would guess she probably picked a week because it's related to time off for a crisis.
Right, probably, you want to do it probably. Yeah, I think so.
But it doesn't, they couldn't submit it within one day, right?
Right, right.
Right, that's true.
One or two days.
But depending on the crisis and...
Right. How much time is?
The first item on the sheet, the professional staff, I don't, that was not talked about with the personnel committee?
You know, I wondered about that.
Yeah, that's a new item.
I was going to say, I don't remember seeing that before.
Because you didn't talk about it.
Okay.
And it's something, we spent some time, just spent some time thinking about how can we, when our teaching staff, they receive their first paycheck on September 15th. They receive twice a month through the end of June. So there's that summer gap right now that they have. And staff have asked, is there something we, they got to figure out a plan cash flow wise.
Yeah, because of the old days. And for new hires, it's really hard, is there, because they have to be back and have daycare going before school starts.
Yep, yep. But then they don't get paid until like three weeks or four weeks later, yeah.
41 equals, so we're going back to...
So this would add this August payday.
This would add one additional payday in August. So they would get their first day.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it goes from 20 to 21.
Exactly.
That's the one negative, that'll be a communication issue.
So the reason we're doing this, because again, we have to reprogram all of our, which I think is probably not something we'll deal with. But, so the reason, I mean, do we have that much of a need for it? Is that what we're getting feedback?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's really what's driving it. It does require absolutely very hard, we have to set up and do.
Right, right.
But it's worth it for our employees to kind of do it. Plus, if you think about it, I mean, our staff, I contract here in August.
Right, right.
It's only here early August anyway.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, I just was wondering if there was that feedback that it would be helpful. Enough feedback. I mean, if you have two people out of 350, that's one thing, but if we have...
Would the other option be to just move the first of the 20? So then their paychecks don't go down in theory. But then they wouldn't get one at the end, or at last stage.
I, yeah, I think...
Yeah, earlier, right.
Yeah.
There's pros and cons.
Right.
But I think this does spread it out, I think it does help our staff.
Yeah.
The other, you know, the other way of doing this, technically, we can't do 24 pay any longer. And you could have, under our collective bargaining agreement, you probably remember that.
Right.
Even with that, if you, all the paychecks were issued again in June, remember?
The employee has to give you, they have to sign up, they have to opt-in, they have to sign saying, "Yep, I want you to divide my paycheck for quarter 24." So then you have a system where not everybody wants this spread out.
So this would be, everybody that falls into this room would have to go.
All our professional staff, all our teaching staff.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, that's the other ability, we had a whole other option, opposed. It makes some sense, but then, right now, we're, we're doing four payrolls a month. That would be six, plus then we would be extra. And I can tell you from experience in a previous life, sometimes people forget what they signed up for.
Right, right.
And get that phone call at the end of June, and they're like, I'm going to get my summer checks. Waited, sign up for your summer checks.
Yeah, right.
It just creates, yeah.
Yeah.
So when they want their PTO to be paid out, do they have a separate checkman after their June checks of just PTO? That's made out during...
Well, the last check's in the June, so they're done with their contract by then, so we can process it.
So they have the 10 days to put it in writing if they want to carry it over?
Yeah, there'll be time to do that.
Okay, before that last check, huh?
Yeah.
But if they don't do that, it's automatically paid out?
That's the way it's set up, yeah.
Right.
So with those changes, do we want to bring this, make those changes and bring it back for one more reading? Or do we just want to adopt it with those changes as noted?
I have a problem.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions, though, Mr. Trud? I'm not hearing anything, so looking for a motion.
I move to approve the modification to the professional and support staff employee handbooks as modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the modifications to the professional and support staff employee handbooks as modified. Real couple of things.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gehart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Nallan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoll?
Yes.
Ms. Vorfagel?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements.
All right, just one I included on your board notes, a message from, and an invitation from Erica Carden, Steve Fisher. This Friday, 11 o'clock, they'll be meeting for pictures with students, Kiwanis, Wassa Homes, and Lusaco Concrete, and Hams Electric, for, for really, yeah, for classrooms. Should like invite the, myself and Ains, for number two or three, to attend that one. Over in Mills, that's on Friday at 11 o'clock. So, yeah, if you'd like to go, let me know in case we have some posts for a corn.
I will be there. I'm taking the picture though. No, I'm just, I'm not going to be in the picture, I just didn't think it was a good idea, I'm going to be in the picture. Because I'm involved with the project, you know, from a business standpoint.
You should be front and center.
That's right. I'll take the picture, Julia.
I don't think I'll be there because with Mr. Biorete out on the train leave, somehow they figured out that I know how it's a child, so I got asked to go with a beauty field. It's Thursday and Friday, so I'm looking forward to that. But that'll be right at the departure time, yes.
That's weird.
I didn't share with them, I don't think we can do two bathrooms in two days and two and a half hours.
Oh my gosh, no.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, it really doesn't work like that.
No.
That's pretty, even professionals here.
No.
Yeah.
One question, two graduations right on the corner, this is putting together the pamphlet or whatever, for the graduation ceremony. I need to know who wants to hand out the poems this year. Normally, I do, but anybody else wants to?
Oh, you're not going to be in there or?
No, I'll be there.
Yeah, normally we do, if somebody else wants to.
They just like to get in the... They like to get in the...
Well, yeah, because Spencer was graduating.
Right, right, but, yeah, right.
I'll be there this year.
Do you want to hand out?
Well, you should probably hand to your eyes.
Yeah, I'll be there.
When is graduation this year?
The second. The third?
I meant the third.
Pitting on the weather.
Nope, it's the second.
We've been lucky, but I'm not feeling confident this year.
I mean, I'll be, I'll be at graduation, so if you need somebody else.
You need, you need seats, you know, so, yeah, I'll leave a seat next to my friend. Wish I could give them.
So as I understand it, it was for your listener.
Yeah.
I will let her know. That's all I had. All right, we do have a closed session this evening. So looking for a motion to adjourn the closed sessions.
I move to adjourn to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, 411C. To discuss professional staff employee contracts, the school board will not reconvene an open session.
Second. So moved to second to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C to discuss professional staff employee contracts. The school board will not reconvene an open session.
Wait one second. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Nallan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?